It's like we.
I gave that to you because we're supposed to be able to trust you with it.
I know. Power on. Seven.
They get it back and everything.
You gotta call the IT guy in?
It's not gonna be bad enough conversations this.
Give me a second, give me a second.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Are we recording? This is a selectmen's meeting. Dave, it's your show.
It's working.
Is this recording?
Okay. Being seven o'clock, I'm gonna call the April 2nd, 2020, uh, meetings to order. Doing some old business to start with the previous, uh, minutes. We actually have, uh, March 12th meeting minutes. I'll entertain a motion on those. Uh, we held off last week or two weeks ago on doing those because they weren't prepared for our meeting.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, regular, uh, selectmen's minutes of March 12th, 2020.
I'll sign it. Send it to you for signature, Mike?
Call for motion, Dave.
Um.
Call for motion.
Oh. Motion to approve those meeting minutes?
Aye.
Go out for your signature.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the regular minutes of the selectmen's meeting on March 19th, 2020.
Do I hear a second?
I second those.
All aye, all say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Make this for your signature. We have one more, uh, non-public meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve the, um, non-public minutes of March 19th.
Second.
Motion's been made, second. All, everybody in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Stand back then. Okay, at this point in the meeting, I'm gonna open it up to, uh, public comment.
Who was that thinking?
Uh, for the record, I wanna state that Leo Martell is video recording the, uh, meeting minutes for the benefit of the public. And, uh, Ms. Dickerson will be posting those online.
Hey, Michael.
Yes.
You signed on my line.
I apologize, just put an arrow on the call to.
No, it looks like I made a mistake.
There you go.
Thanks a lot. Hey, for some reason, she put his name down the board.
Okay.
How quick it is to fall from the top, isn't it?
Public comment is over. The first thing on our agenda tonight is, uh, appointments for the selectmen's representatives for the different departments. I'll go down through the list. We've kinda spoken a little bit about these, each of the previous meetings and, um, I was determined to be the, uh, chair of the board on the last meeting. The date on that was, uh, 3/19, and all these decisions will be made on, uh, 4/2, 2020. Uh, co-chair for the board of selectmen. Here a nomination for that. Did you guys get a chance to talk about that or think about that?
I mean, but like, whatever.
Didn't even think about it.
All right, well, now's the time.
I'm, I'm, I'll go on here, that's fine.
Is that what you guys would like?
I don't care.
Okay. Make a motion that we nominate Mike Kaminsky to the co-chair then.
Second. I don't want, I don't want Mike second.
Okay. Now, um, we're also gonna do an ex officio. And, uh, this must be voted on at this board of selectmen's meeting. And this person would be able to go to the, uh, planning board meetings if I wasn't able to make it or any of the other meetings where we need a vote on. So that they could be a voting member.
We did that last year because we had renovation. You weren't at the last one, Mike made it.
And you might wanna keep someone that's familiar.
Okay.
You know, what's going on.
So we'll put Mike on that one as well. They've got a secondary backup on here and I'll list you as that one.
Okay.
I don't think we did a secondary backup ex officio last year, but in case it's needed with the sicknesses and whatnot, we'll go ahead and do it. Energy Committee, Bob Martell, you were on that as a selectmen's rep last year.
Yeah, uh, are you just?
Yeah, I do, I'll be on that.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna send that one to Mike Kaminsky?
Yep.
Um, Highway Safety Committee, uh, was me last year and I'd like to open that up to one of you two because I'm gonna take over some of the.
I can do the highway safety.
Okay, so put Bob down on that one. Um, capital improvement plan. Um, I was on that one last year as well. I'm gonna be on the Town Hall Restoration Committee. So, um, I guess capital improvement for right now is done. I'll stay on that one for now. Is that okay with you two?
Was it that, wasn't really that involved?
Yeah. I'll take the easy one. Town Hall Restoration Committee, um, Bob and I spoke last week at the meeting and we're gonna swap those two. I'm gonna do the, uh.
Principal.
Principal Selectmen's Rep and Bob is gonna be the, uh, secondary rep on that.
Yeah.
Planning Board?
Kinda we already signed it based on, uh, above.
Yep, so I'm gonna be on the Planning Board.
First meeting canceled, by the way.
Yes. Um, Police Department Representative.
You wanna switch with me?
Um, first, I'm sorry, I skipped over one. Historical Awareness, Bob, you on there with a stand, right?
I was asked if I'd stay on and I have no problem.
Okay. Um, Police Department Rep?
You wanna switch? He's your.
I think so because, uh, we'll put you as the primary Mike. Mike was the secondary. Is that okay, Bob?
Sure.
Make sure to speak up if somebody has a different opinion than what we're writing down here. And I'll do the secondary. Um, because this one's by appointment and I have one more year on the KTSCA, I'll keep that one.
You could free chicken with that?
I wish I did. Joint Loss.
Oh, you could do that one.
So that one's gonna be Bob. And Concord Regional Solid Waste.
I think we keep the same person.
Patrick in there. Hazard mitigation, no rep needed. We're gonna skip that one. Transfer Station Rep?
I, I think we all are because we all support Woody. I think we're all equally because we, uh, give him support when he goes down there. I, I don't, we need a specific rep. And I think communication's been excellent this year. There's an issue, it brings it to all three of us, so I don't, I, I feel like we all three concerned with that.
Yeah.
So now that we're all approachable to Woody if there's an issue. Would you agree with that, Bob?
Sure.
They've got a spot for you. You wanna pencil somebody in just for a, just to fill out the sheet?
I'd be more than happy to.
All right, and then we're gonna put Bob as the Highway Department rep then. How's that, Bob?
That's right, that's you, I'll be on the, uh, Highway Safety, is that?
Yeah, so I'm gonna, no, there's another line down there in Highway Department, so I'll just list you there. In case somebody needs to discuss or have a meeting, we'll, and we'll put Mike on this one.
Transfer, yeah.
Yeah.
Hazard mitigation committee, that's, um, should we add that? Isn't that, um, very close to joint loss? Hazard mitigation, do we even meet for this past year? Is there a committee for that? I, I question.
Jeez, that's the first time I hear of it.
It says no appointment needed, so we'll just leave that one off.
Yeah, I got from Linda Landry, Dave, that three, and some of these are gonna require actual appointments. And these are the ones from Linda. Did you get that?
I have a little package here.
All right.
So let's just finish this first. I'll get discussion of the board to decide who will take a position. I wanna put a note that the following, um, Dave Nall made the motion to approve the positions as referenced below. Who will second my motion on this?
So, yeah.
Motion been made, second, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, that portion is done. Now we have another, uh, we have another list here that is a list the Town Clerk Linda provides for us. And this one is gonna be, uh, for all the various committees. Uh, let's see if she's provided any of those for signatures tonight. She's still a work in progress. Oh, there are some. Okay. What she's done is given me a cover sheet of all of the, um, positions within the town that are held by the different boards. And she's also, um, given us the expiration dates on each of those. And, uh,
What, do you wanna act on that, or are you gonna defer for a week, for the next week?
Well, these ones here are ones that we can act upon right away, let's say, Mike.
All right.
And what I'll do is, uh, I'll give these to you, Mike, and why don't you make a motion on these? And read them and make sure to do the appropriate date.
Okay.
And the ones when you come to the committees that you, Bob, and I just signed up for, just reference your list. I gave Linda a quick, uh, breakdown of this list.
Okay.
Just wanna make sure they're the same that we signed up for today, okay?
Okay. Okay. We're gonna appoint Jeff Crosby. Jeff Crosby. Jeff Crosby, um, to the Highway Safety Committee and you, I gotta read the whole thing? Yeah.
That's why I gave it to you.
I know. There's a vacancy in the Highway Safety Committee in said town and whereas we, the subscribers, have confidence and his ability to perform the duties of said office, we duly hereby appoint the said Jeff A. Crosby, a member of the Highway Safety Committee of said town. While taking the oath of office and his appointment outside of the oath of office by the Town Clerk, you have such powers to perform such duties and be subject to liabilities for such office and to other, to another, either person shall become chosen and qualified in your stead.
Michael, what we can do is, uh,
I'd say.
Read the person's name, the position, and then the expiration date of their thing, and that'd be sufficient.
Okay, again, it's Highway Safety Committee, term ending, um, March 2021.
Yep, sign it and send it to me and I'll give it to Bob afterwards.
Yep.
This is Highway Safety Committee. It's, uh, appointed to meet myself, but it shouldn't be appointed by Martell, so that's gotta be changed. And we can, um.
You want, you can do, you wanna do pen and ink? I'd be more than happy.
Yeah, I'll do those, that's what.
Okay, this is the nominee, uh, dangerous group, uh, to a vacancy on the Highway Safety Committee, term ending March 2021. This is to nominate Jonathan Wigan, Highway Safety Committee, term ending March 2021. This is to nominate Judy Keefe as an alternate cemetery trustee, term ending March 2021. I'll give you this one, just to those.
So, what we have, Bob?
This is to nominate George Holt as a member of the Planning Board, term ending March 2023. This is to nominate Brian Pike, member of the Planning Board, term ending March 2023. This is to nominate Dave Nall, member of the Planning Board, term ending March 2021.
I'm sorry, Bob.
That's okay.
Trying to flow them down as far as I can.
That's. This is to nominate John Hurley as a member of the zoning board, term ending March 2023.
Mike, you have to put a line through this, but this was nominated for ex officio. I'll still sign it.
I stand corrected, we sign it again. This is the nominee, myself, member of the Planning Board, ex officio representative. Yes, but you're also an ex officio representative too. I'm the alternate, not, this is Judy, the alternate.
Bob's the alternate, the ex officio, you're the ex officio and the member.
Okay.
The chair.
I, okay, okay.
Can I?
This is a separate. I stand corrected.
That's okay. This name. We'll separate a lot.
This is the name James Susi as a member of the Zoning Board of Adjustment, term ending March 2023.
Okay, no.
Okay, thanks, we'll lock up.
Thank you.
Take care.
This is nominated George Holt.
Hey, I got a quick question for you, Pam.
Yeah?
Sorry while you're here, um.
I'm not.
We're gonna, we're gonna be speaking about taking, um, maybe online checks for tax payments. Do you have any issues with that? Not credit cards, nothing else. Be a check payment that's available.
How are you gonna do it?
No, not online, uh, mail it.
No, not mailing. People can mail it now. Like, if somebody calls in, they can pay by check electronically.
We have no way of doing that.
I know, we're gonna set that up.
That's gonna be a huge problem.
That's why I'm asking you, what, what kind of problems do you foresee?
The problem is gonna be, it's gonna give, uh, other people access to the checking account.
How's that?
To be able to take their checks and put them in the account.
How would they give you a check now?
They're gonna be automatically doing it wirelessly. It's not, it's not the same as somebody taking a check and depositing it.
Okay, well, if you can, can you talk with Judy about it next week and we'll talk about it on our following meeting? See if there are any issues that you're aware with her.
Who's she talking about doing it through?
The town's gonna be setting up so they can take checks electronically.
It has to be a third party involved.
I would imagine, be our bank, wouldn't it?
Nobody's contacted me. Well, she's, she must be talking with another third party, which is a whole different issue, again.
Well, um, I'll read through the paperwork again and, uh, we'll make sure to keep you in the loop on it, okay?
Yep.
All right, thanks, Pam.
This is the nominee, George Holt, member of the Conservation Commission, term ended March 2022. This is the nominee, Brett Sinclair, member of the Conservation Commission, term ending March 2023.
Bob, could you do me a favor and second these motions as he says them?
Yeah, second, yeah. Well, I'll second them all when he's done.
Okay.
This is the nominee, Brian Camol, uh, as a member of the Town Forest Committee, term ending March 2023. This is the, uh, nominee Jeffrey, Jeff A. Crosby to the Town Forest Committee, term ending March 2023. This is the nominee, Robert Martell, Selectmen's Representative to the Historical Awareness Committee, term ending March 2021. This is the nominee, William Nichols, to the Historical Awareness Committee, term ending March 2023. This is, uh, the nominee, William Zeller as the DES liaison to the Historical Awareness Committee, term ending March 2021. This is the nominee, Louis Duval to the Energy Committee, term ending March 2023. This is the nominee, Robert Martell to the Energy Committee, term ending March 2021.
Well, that changes to you.
Yes, it does.
Line it up, that's why. I just gave her the best guess after, since we had talked earlier, so I can, knew there were a couple that were gonna change. I told her we just lined them up.
I stand corrected. This is the nominee, myself, to the Energy Committee, term ending March 2021, for the record.
Good as heck, Bob.
This is the nominee, Thomas Cusano, to the Dunbaran Old Home, Dunbaran Old Home Day Committee, term ending March 2021. And I hope we have this year.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
This is the nominee, Kent Curver, to the Dunbaran Old Home Day Committee, term ending March 2021. This is the nominee, Don Larson, to the Dunbaran Old Home Day Committee, term ending March 2021. This is the nominee, John Stevens, to the Dunbaran Old Home Day Committee, term ending March 2021. This is the nominee, David Nall, to the Dunbaran Town Hall Restoration Committee, term ending March 2021. This is the nominee, Robert Martell, to the Dunbaran Town Hall Restoration Committee, term ending March 2021. This is the nominee, Shelley Westenberg, to the Dunbaran Town Hall Restoration Committee, term ending March 2021.
She had that in there, Mike, so she must have made the decision to do it.
This, yeah, this is the nominee, Alison Valeris, as in the position, to the position of Deputy Treasurer term ending March 2023.
Yeah, that's not the one you were speaking of earlier.
No.
That one she held off on.
I just like, gotta wait for Bob, I like the discussion phase, I just like to make a comment.
You're all set with this?
Ju, yeah. I went for discussion phase.
Okay, I'll second.
The motions.
Okay, so Mike made the motion on all those appointments and, uh, Bob is seconding them. All in favor of those appointments?
I'd like to discuss something first.
Okay.
I, I just like to make a, a comment that in the past, we would have recommendate, we have no recommendations from the chairs of each committee. As we're, we're looking at this blindly, I thought we would value the recommendations of each chair of every committee.
It's my understanding that the chairs have recommended those people and given them to Linda.
Okay, that's what I wanna be assured of.
That's what Linda had told me.
Okay, that's, I, and I.
She didn't do any of those appointments without recommendations from the chairs.
And like with the deputy, uh, tax collector, I wanna make sure we have every deputy treasurer.
Yeah, we should double check that too.
Yeah. Okay, and with that, I have, I know, I, then I salute you for having that, but we need, I wanna make sure that information was, okay, obtained.
Yep, and that's the way I believe they're obtained, and that's what we asked her for last year, so hopefully she's fallen through with that. A motion's been made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that portion's done. Bob, let's put these with him. That just gives the terms and everything. Okay, that takes care of appointments from the selectmen's rep. Next thing we have on the agenda is the bid for the town truck. I'm gonna take one and I'm gonna give each of the other selectmen. We have three bids for the town truck. We'll open them up simultaneously.
High, low, or medium?
This is serious business.
I'm going, bro. See? Second one, you have some time.
This is the, uh, old truck from the transfer station we was discussing here, and we have about three bids to open up.
Oh, jeez, okay.
The bid I have on the truck, 2,000 Chevy Silverado 2,500. I have a bid from Peter Gamash for $1,025.
I have a bid from Ben Buford, Buford, from 42 Tucker Hill Road, for $3,400.
Still hold that, Bob?
I have a bid, but no name on it, for a 1358.
No name at all, uh-huh. Does that have anything on the outside of the envelope?
No, just says truck bid.
Okay, well, we have three bids, one for 1,025. Bob has one from 13.
58?
58, and Mike has one.
The winner?
The winning bid at, uh, 3,400 from Ben Buford, 42 Tucker Hill Road. They have a cell number on them. Bob, when we put these in the pile and we're gonna.
I'll give you this one, too.
I'm gonna put it right there, yep.
Do we make a motion to accept the bid?
Yep, I'll make a motion to accept the bid for the 2,500.
3,400.
No, the 2,500 Chevy Silverado for 3,400. And, uh, award that bid to Ben. Um, hopefully the economy is good enough. I know he was in, um, I believe yesterday to try and increase his bid, so I'm pretty sure he'll be happy to get that. They were, he was notified that the bids were closed, but he wanted to come in and put another bid in, so.
I have to say, Mike, you, you put the motion on the table?
Yep, the motion's on the table.
I'll second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I'll have Joe Marie call him tomorrow and notify him.
Okay, Woody, when, can you have the truck ready for delivery?
Do you want us to deliver it to him, or how do you wanna do it? We still have the government plates on it?
Yeah.
I could, I could deliver it. If it's all right with the board, I could.
If it's in town, it might be better than take the plates with you.
Yeah.
Also, uh, why don't we wait till Liam's back next week so we do a proper bill of sale to him, unless you're, uh, gonna do the bill of sale.
Probably should handle it through the town office, that way it's on a town letterhead.
So we'll have Joe Marie call him, and then we'll have to get ahold of you next week and we'll, uh, work out the, uh, bill of sale.
Okay.
All right?
Congratulations for making a sale of it.
Can you make sure it says as is, as seen?
As is, where is, no warranty expressed during the vote.
Yeah.
Although, run it by, it looked clean, the tires look new. He even, oh, that whole, I wish him very, uh, many, many miles with that.
If they see what they can is, he's come down and talked to me three times about it and then I told him he's more welcome to look at the service records that we have on it.
Yeah.
Explained on what I know is wrong with it and what I think is an issue that's, you know, potential.
Now, did he have to put a chase, a chase seat in there, a new seat in there?
He's looked at it, so.
Okay. Okay, bringing it back to the board. Let me look at this thing here. We've got a couple of things to go over. We've got information, uh, we all have a copy on this, apparently. Uh, Bob and I do. Bob, David, Mike, did you pick up yours?
Uh, regarding.
Town minute meetings from 1989?
I did not get that.
What it was in reference to, uh, you actually gave us some.
The Recreation Committee.
Right.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, Linda, Linda showed that with me, second. Where it was made, it was, uh, by the Board of Selectmen years ago.
Yep, in 1989. Where we have the, uh, we only have one person still on the Recreation Committee, I think. Actually, nobody's on it, they've all come off of there. Joseph Lou, Richard Campbell. Yeah, we lost our last person on the Recreation Committee that was established in 1989. And it was set up and signed through the Select Board, um, 7:00 PM on November 7th in 1989. And being where there are no people on this board any longer, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, discontinue the, uh, Recreation Committee Board. There are some funds on this line item that have to do with paying referees and stuff, but it is not coming from this board, uh, so we will still have a line item on our budget, um, to pay for some of the rec department stuff over there, but as far as this committee goes, I think we should dissolve this committee. For now, until there's some people within town that wanna come to us that would like to establish a new committee.
I like them, before, you making a motion now?
I was.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
And now open it for discussion?
Uh, my discussion is, I, I'd like to defer this for, this next meeting. And I'd like to get a further accounting of. Uh, my discussion is, I, I'd like to defer this for this next meeting, and I'd like to get a further accounting of the funding, where the funds are, have, who has control of the funds, and where the funds are going to, in other words, just because they're paying reps, and who's collecting money, uh, if they're doing coaching and stuff like that, uh, down in the school, I'd like to have a, a better accounting of where the funds are going, who's collecting them, and how they're being expended. And I, I think that's important, before we, as we dissolve this committee, which I, I fully concur with, but the thing is, I think we need a better accounting of how the funds are accounted for, and who's, who's been expending them over the last year.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'd like to know where the transparency with what happens with whatever monies, 'cause we had the one person that's ru, doing something with the kids there.
Yeah.
But, and I think Leans reached out to the person a couple of times.
Yeah.
And we haven't had a response, so, you know, I'd like to go a little further and find out exactly what's gonna transpire.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we table our decision on that to our next scheduled meeting, which will be in two weeks.
Very good.
And we'll ask the town manager, uh, town, uh, to get some information for us.
Okay, motion's been made to, uh.
I'll second it.
And seconded, all in favor of holding off? Aye.
Okay, as far as holding off, yeah.
Yeah, on the decision meeting. Uh, the next thing I have on the agenda here, um, we have the milfoil control at Gorham Pond, uh, the selectmen, um, had a milfoil group that was appointed, and this one was appointed at town meeting. And furthermore, I ask the selectmen to appoint a committee to monitor all public waters, town presence, burial, mofa, and other none of, non-native invasive aquatic plants, and to investigate and recommend the action to be taken to control any infestations of the same and prevent an introduction of new plants. I'm gonna recommend to see, um, that we hold off on this, and maybe, uh, we only have one person left on this, uh, Bill Zeller. Um, I'd like to have a discussion with Bill Zeller, and also, um, if we're gonna make a motion at this, because it was established at town meeting, I think it should be done at town meeting.
Well, I think, did the town meeting authorize the selectmen to do it, or did they direct the selectmen to do it? If they directed, what, what did they do versus directing? Did they direct?
Ask selectmen to appoint a committee. But it was done at town meeting, so I think that if we, um, speak with Bill, and no, no longer does anybody else wanna be on it, then maybe we, uh.
Thing is, um, I, this is a, this is almost like, we have a subcommittee of this, which is not really part of this, but that whole.
Gorham Pond.
Gorham Pond area, uh, they've been carrying the major stick, and I think, the major, carrying the, the water for this, for this committee, and, uh, this committee, in my tenure, has never reported to the board at all with any recommendations up or down, it's always been that neighborhood association.
I think this was established way back in the beginning, and after it was established that we did have milfoil, uh, that other branch of the committee kinda took over. The other thing is that we are gonna continue to have this committee, the people down there ought to be on this committee.
Bingo, and my thought exactly.
I was gonna say, you know, Bob Leonard's the one that just picked up the ball at, at this time, and was watching that, so, and he reported that he deals with Amy Smigula from DES, as far as the other ponds in town, so it might be a good idea to get some input.
In fact, he might be a good candidate to be, to lead this committee, and to give them an official title.
Right, so for now, I think we'll hold off on any decisions on that. Okay, um.
Could we have the gentleman come in, or at least talk, have we talked to him?
Yeah.
That, we don't blindside him.
And I think we'll wait, uh, this is a non-pressing issue, we'll wait till after this COVID-nineteen situation.
Absolutely.
The last thing I have on my agenda before we get into town business, um, it's brought to my attention today, the door at the selectmen's office, when we come in prior, before our meetings, um, to review the stuff from town business, what's on the agenda, and to read, so that we are up to date on everything that we're gonna have to speak about that night, when the door is closed on there, and there's more than one selectman in there, it's being perceived like we're having a meeting, and I know that before I became selectman, and didn't know what was going on behind that door, um, you know, it, it was perceived by me that there was a, like a subcommittee going on, or a sub-meeting, and decisions were being made before that. So I'd like to ask, uh, I think Bob brought it up before as well, on different years, I know I brought it up on different years, it's been brought up to me again today. I think when there's more than one selectman in there, we should try to continue to keep that door open to the public.
Agreed.
The public can always walk through it, um, it had been brought to our attention before, we close that door, so we can read, get the agenda, get everything, uh, have a little bit clearer head when we're working on things, but I think we need to make a conscious effort as we walk in there, to try and leave that door open, so that it doesn't have the appearance that we're having a, a meeting before the meeting. And I just wanna put that out to the board and see what you guys' thoughts were towards that.
I concur, appearances are important, but I have to, I've been doing this for three and a half years, almost four years now, I think, I think this board has been painstakingly, uh, we've taken painstaking measures to assure that we may discuss an issue, but with never a decision, or any type of decision, or pre-decision has been made in that, in that room until we come here. We share information about what's on the agenda, but we, we, we won't go out of our way not to make decisions.
I'll, I'll concur, concur with Mike, uh, I know that myself, Bob, Mike, we all try and keep it, uh, separate, but again, I wanna keep it.
Yeah, but it's perception.
This perception is that we're not having a meeting, and allow the people to walk in there, so.
I think maybe sometimes, and I, and I don't know in the past, but I'll say, from the time I've been on, the door's been closed, I think, just to keep traffic out, 'cause some people pop their head, and like you said, sometimes you're trying to read the stuff in a folder.
Yeah.
And it becomes, it's a little bit of a disturbance, 'cause.
Right.
Like, this.
Can't get through the.
Well, like tonight, you know, you had a ton of stuff to go through.
Yeah. So I just wanted to put that back out there, if we can try and keep it open, if we, if we get bothered by it, certainly, we can get up and close the door so we can read safer. There's not really another area that we can come and read, the public's assembling here, that's wide open. The other two areas, people are there till seven o'clock at night, so, um, or come in at seven, so I just wanted to put that back out, but I have, uh, I have nothing there, that being said, I'd like to go into town business, I guess. Okay. We have had a request twice this year, uh, we have two state police canines in town, to license those police, it's dogs, it's ten dollars for the town each, total of twenty dollars, and, um, we've been asked if we would agree to a waiver. The state does pay them if they reimburse, they do reimburse the police officers, uh, but we have been requested twice to waive the fee. We have not waived it as far as yet, and I'd like to bring this to the board for discussion.
Thing is, um, is, from the applicant's point of view, it's no, no money out of their pockets, it's basically the state takes money out of our pockets, so I'm not gonna waive it on behalf of the state, because the state is stingy enough for our town, and I think it just lowers our revenue, all be it a small amount, but things increase another, another bit of paperwork for the town clerk, and I think the town clerk has consistency of doing it correctly, and charging everyone the same, I have no, I don't, I recommend denied any waivers.
What's your thought, Bob?
Well, you know, I kind of agree with that, only because if it's not coming out of the person's pocket, it's not a big deal.
Okay. And my thought is, uh, it may come out of their pocket for a short-term period of time, but like any company, uh, they expense things out all the time, and they're willing to pay for it, and it's not coming directly out of their pockets, so I'm gonna concur with you guys, and put no on here for now, it's just a, uh, not as a motion, but a consensus. Okay, going on to the next thing in the item, we have from our town of Dunbaran, planning and zoning and building office, a list of different properties they're working on in town, um, there's, they've got the botnet piece on there still, which is, uh, a work in progress, they're waiting for road postings to finish up, uh, there's one thing on here that was brought to light, was, and it had been brought up earlier, um, the library town hall roof, snow, um, and ice falling off the roof, 'cause it's so slick, uh, that was brought up in previous years, and we had some signage out there. The building inspectors were recommending a covered roof on the ramp and entryway, uh, for safety. I think that may get resolved as part of the town hall and library restoration.
Yeah.
Addition goes forth, so I think for now, we'll hold off.
Yeah, 'cause that, that might end up being encased anyways, you know?
And so as long as the signage goes up next year, real early, before the season starts, um, referencing that to people, I'm good with that.
Because how long, how, how many years have we gone without an entry there? One hundred?
Knocked some wood, what you say? I know the complaint on Tenny Hill Road was, uh, uh, the property owner has been very receptive with working with our, um, building department, on getting the items in the property rectified, as well as his permitting, and, uh, so that's going along good. Donna's jury duty had been canceled because of COVID-nineteen, and I think those are all the items on there. Moving on, um, we also have from our planning, health, um, and zoning and building committee, uh, list of how they're handling permits, inspections, plan review, and summary. This is also posted outside, and is also online, but they are referring to how they're handling each of those situations, and I checked in with them today, and they said it's going very smoothly. So, uh, word from a couple of weeks ago is working good.
Is the, uh, the corollary, the governor just put out another bulletin, uh.
That's lower down here.
Okay, regarding that.
Yeah. Okay, this is the, uh, this is, I'm gonna bring out now, this is the one from our tax collector, which is Judy Van Kavken. The importance she's put on, on this is high, in light of the coronavirus, I hereby within request that you authorize the required amount to allow me to institute the ability for taxpayers to pay taxes online. Please forgive me for substituting this in writing, I will not be attending your April second meeting, as I am practicing social distancing. I am available by phone to answer questions, see the information I receive as well. Basically, um, the printer would allow her to print these checks here, sounds like, so it wouldn't be a third party, um, and it would not be credit cards. She, uh, looked into the cost of adding this, and taking online tax payments. Uh, there would be checks online, and there's a minimum fee that the town has to pay, and it's to set it up. Um, the fees for citizens, when they sign up for it's a dollar fifty per transaction, and a thirty-five cent log fee. Stocking of the checks for a thousand checks, um, was forty-five dollars, possibility, if everybody paid that, we have three hundred dollars per year cost to the town. I'm gonna recommend waiting.
Yeah, and she needs, I talked to her before coming here.
Yeah.
She has some questions for Leans, she has some questions where she needs information from Linda, and evidently, it seems like Pam Melioto has some concerns, but it would have been a laser printer, so that they're sending you the image of the check, she would laser printer, print that check from the email out, so she can deposit those in the bank. So that's how she was gonna do that, but she said, like I said, she has questions for Leans, and she has some, so, till they get some kind of resolve to some of the issues, so we know, 'cause it also requires the purchase of a laser printer.
Yeah, and she did not have any cost of the laser printers either.
That is the beauty of this, laser printers have dropped in price precipitously over the last several years, you can get a high, very high quality one.
Yeah, I think you can as well.
No, she has a second concern, which does make sense, 'cause I, I mean, I've been using them for a long time, but she was hoping that they would get the pre-adhesive type envelopes.
Yeah.
Rather than her having to seal those, the old way is she can just, you know, the, the envelopes, you just fold one end up, put the other end down, and you're all done. And in this day and age, what we don't know is out there, you know, it's probably a lot easier to do that. I don't, you know, I never realized that there was a big difference, 'cause I've always, when I used to buy them, I bought a box of five hundred. You know, and it wasn't, didn't seem like it was that much of a difference, so.
I got one other thing, too, is I just wanna make a note here for the, uh, people watching this, we do have a drop box established outside now, and we also have a mail slot, so people can drop their checks off here, call ahead, if there's any interest to calculate them on, and so she can take them that way also. But I'll defer that one for our next meeting, so we get some more clarification on it.
I don't feel the laser printer's a, a huge expense at all.
No. Uh, we have a notification here that, uh, one of our part-time police officers is gonna be moving on, uh, we have a final, um, letter, uh, stating that she's accepted a job at a different department, Mike, can you decide that?
I saw that already, I'm.
And, uh, we also have some information from our police department, from the chief, uh, they have, uh, set up some new regulations with all the COVID-nineteen stuff that comes out, updating their department, and, uh, they have this on their door, as well as online, again, like that's, leave your signature. What Mike had referenced earlier, I'll have you sign this copy, Mike, um, the governor had just put out emergency order twenty-three, and I was very glad to see this, because this clarifies several areas where the previous emergency orders did not clarify. And with COVID-nineteen affecting all our different departments, this gives the building department, um, great latitude on how they're looking at their different meetings they're setting up. It also gives us the ability to cancel and change the dates of planning and zoning, um, meetings, which was very important to us, especially, we had one where there was nothing on the agenda, but typically, they have a meeting if they're scheduled.
Required.
And required, um, and also, it does give us some latitude on our meetings to do some electronic signing, and signing from home, if we need to do that, uh, which I don't think we're to that point yet, but we may get there. Um, speaking of COVID-nineteen, I understand we have a second case in Dunbaran.
Total of four cases now.
Uh, there's only two confirmed cases, as of late tonight, I checked before I came in, the other ones are gone out for testing, so.
This contrary, conflicting information there, this is.
I spoke with our emergency management chief, Wigan.
Okay.
He should be the one that knows.
Uh, I spoke with, uh, Chief Police.
He did?
Yes.
The two chiefs going at each other.
No, but the thing is, in regard to that, there's a website where, where they report by town, it's always twenty-four hours old.
Yeah.
And they've reported numbers by town, it's twenty-four.
We're still listed under the one to four anyway, but I think that there are two confirmed, and the other ones are out for testing and haven't been responded to yet.
Can I talk on that corollary real quick?
As long as you don't have names.
Well, it's the chief, the chief of police.
Excuse me, why not?
Um, I think there's some privacy things there that.
They're showing pictures and names on TV. Come on, this is a small town, and so one person could infect a lot of people in this small town.
Um, all the people that we're talking about are all self-quarantined.
It, but my point is, you, you, they're giving names and faces on TV all the time.
TV's on us, though.
This is an, an issue that's, uh, to, speaks to the public's health here, and so we're gonna keep it quiet, so that way, we don't wanna bother with that, bother them. They went out and gave their names themselves, they were on TV.
Um, I don't know.
Yeah, on CNN.
On CNN.
They were on CNN, yeah.
Yeah.
Really?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think it's to the public's interest to know, so that way they can protect themselves, too, it doesn't make sense not to.
I don't know, I, I don't think we should be, as a board, giving their names out, um, I didn't see it on CNN, but, um.
Yeah, they interviewed him right on TV, on CNN, she apologized for it and everything. So again, it's a health thing, it's, this is not a privacy issue, this is a health issue.
Um, I don't even know all of the people, so. I don't have names myself. I don't have names myself.
I, like, I, I know one, and I think the one I, one I know is someone that was on CNN, and that's, that's public knowledge right now. It was on, it was plastered overseas and shared on on uh, shall I say, the social media.
Right.
They had links to it on social media. But the thing is, as a corollary of that, on the same subject, the chief asked if we wanted to have uh, he can create access to us for us, the selectmen, to have our account established for us with the emergency operations center because they have a little more detailed information that's not immediately available to the public. And if we're willing to do that, he'll set up the accounts for us and we can have access via this website to get onto uh.
I don't think that would hurt, Mike.
Okay, I wanted to get.
You're the police liaison also.
I'll give a call and make it happen. He'll still set up an account for all three of us, uh individual accounts, so we can get our access to the emergency operations center news, news link and their updates and stuff. He checks in every morning, as does, I'm sure, Chief, uh, right, Chief.
And I'll tell you what I'll do, Leo, is I know our next meeting is not for two weeks, but I will check with some of the state agencies and I'll double check. I only know of one party that I can name a name off to, and I don't think it's fair to say one name and not the other and do that.
Problem is that, as he just said, it's been, it's been on the Dunbarton social media uh site. So all the young people know who it is, but all the old people who don't get on that don't know who it is.
Right. Well.
It's a safety issue, it's not a, it's, I'm sure they're not gonna be, they're not gonna be angry if their name comes out, because they, you understand, they were on TV to tell it and everything. So to me, it doesn't make sense that their name wouldn't come up. It just doesn't make any sense. If it was me, I'd be happy to tell everybody. This isn't a s- uh a privacy issue anymore, this is a safety issue now. Next thing you know, you could have twenty people in town.
Leo, in all, in all due respect to these, these people, they are self, uh they're self-quarantined, and I think it's um and based upon that, it is no, when they self-quarantine, there's no more issue unless you go up to the house. So I feel that didn't do the right thing. I, I agree with Dave, the thing is, I, I'd like to get an opinion there before we start giving out medical information.
I'm not trying to pick on anybody by any means. I'm just trying to make it safe for everybody is what I'm trying to do.
I agree, and if we can do that, then I'll, we'll do that, but I'd like to check into it first. What are your thoughts, Bob?
Well, if you can get, if you can get a uh, an authority that says it's, it's acceptable, then we should do it, you know? And not having any knowledge, I would have to say that, you know, here, in some cases, now these people gave their name, but HIPAA does protect people, even though, you know, they could be contagious. It's got nothing to do with HIPAA.
Oh, it does, it does.
No, it doesn't.
Yes, releasing medical information, it's, it's a, it's a privacy issue.
Yeah, right.
It's more privacy. HIPAA is more of a medical office, Bob, I agree with you. If it's more of a privacy issue, and here we are as public officials who'd be releasing private information.
I just, I just need to know from somebody from the state or whatever, the uh.
Name, I, I concur with Bob.
Health and Human Services, you know, that if you know of people that are contagious in your town, is it proper to let people know so that they're aware?
And I think like Leo said, it is different if they give their name up, then those people have obviously, you know, given that right now.
It's on, it's on the social media.
Yeah, but that's only one family, and the thing is, uh, and we said, said there's one to four people in town, let's, let's assume that. So we know of one family, the thing is only because it's been out there publicly, but the thing is, we don't know the other three, and if the state isn't, I'd know if it's secretive from the state. It'd be interesting to find out if it's secretive, and can we, should we release it? I'd like to get some guidance from the state on that.
But you know, I, I can understand where they apologize and they've said that they have it, at least they're making people aware that, you know, hey.
And that could be one out, one out of three, one out of four people.
But I don't know where we stand with coming out with it and, cause unfortunately, it's not, they're not coming after me. They're coming after the town. And that's everybody, you know?
Yeah, why don't we wait and hold off and check that out, and uh at least we'll know, cause all of these things that I've read on COVID nineteen, nothing is specifically said that we have a right to, you know, list these people down. They have all these different things, I mean, paper after paper.
You watch the news and there's all kinds of names coming out and, and, you know, and these people are dead, so they, you know, what, they not protected anymore? Their name's not protected once they're dead?
Correct. That is correct. No, that is correct.
So they're not?
Correct.
So what about the people who are sick, who are on life support, and their names come out?
That's, that would be a violation, a privacy violation.
But it's on TV all the time.
Not if you.
It is on the news all the time. I watched it tonight before I got here.
They announced, I, I didn't see, I don't see too many names being announced, but the thing is, I think, all right, I, I, we can debate this, but I concur with Dave, we should probably just get an opinion on this.
Yeah, we'll get an opinion, but the uh, and some people, you know, Leo, I think that are on the news, have given the news the uh the authority to have their name, you know, to do that, so I'd like to at least check into that. Let's move on to some good news. We have a couple of ever-source bills in for our town departments. And uh there's a substantial savings on the supply side, uh to give you an example. This building here had a supply savings of two hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-four cents and only a delivery charge of one thirty-seven oh three. So that's a substantial amount off of this. Yeah, I just wanna say, this is just one bill uh that was due to us, but it just shows that we are gonna have some substantial savings to be seen um from our solar panels, especially coming into the summer months.
Dave, you should also point out the fact that we're gonna get mega savings in about four and a half years.
Yeah.
Because we, we basically had to opt to own the panels rather than lease the panels, or shall I say, yeah, lease the panels.
Okay, moving on to the next item. Uh we sent out a memo last week after our um selectmen's meeting the prior two weeks ago, um asking that the town department had to budget their expenses uh very tightly through these difficult times in case we need to draw into their funds to continue operating the town properly, so that notice went out. This is just another note we got from uh Governor Chris Sanunu um on right-to-know laws and other statutory deadlines that are allowing us to um extend some of those timeframes through this COVID nineteen crisis. Here's emergency order twelve, which came out just before the other one. Showing the different public access to different meetings and how we can go about doing it with some live video and whatnot. Mike needs to sign that one. And here's another COVID nineteen from Governor Sanunu, um state officials. And this is um answering questions, different government agencies have had the specific issues coming up with COVID nineteen, so that they all stay within their legal guidelines. We've all read these electronically, and these are just paper copies, um to keep our file complete. Jennifer King, which uh does our meeting minutes here, um is gonna be doing those from the recording, Mike is gonna provide for her. And uh also she stated that uh she had lost one of her full-time positions and is gonna be doing the uh payroll and payable checks um during the daytime hours from this point on out until further notice. And uh this is just the emergency services for COVID nineteen. Again, Mike, you're gonna sign this one. We received that one two weeks ago. And that's the end of town business that we have for now. And I'd like to open it up one last time for public comment.
Yeah, I uh mentioned to Woody, I saw a couple of the guys from the uh transfer station this week cleaning the sides of the road, and I just came upon them quietly when I was driving. They didn't even know I was there. They had their head, their, they were, had their faces down to the ground picking. They were doing a real good job.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were busy doing it.
While we're on that subject, Leo, I stopped into the transfer station to bring my own stuff down, and uh I saw the guys coming back uh with our older truck. They had propane tacks, tires, rope, um trash of all sorts and type, and looked to me like they were doing a great job, and uh I think it's a, a good uh time to utilize them. You can also use them on your off days, Woody, as long as it stays from that ten to three timeframe we have anytime Monday through Friday. Um but I think that that's a great use of their time. And when we get further down um the road on this, and we have all the roads cleaned up, we'll bring back to this board a discussion about um how we're gonna continue to pay those people at that time. So as that approaches with you, and you see we're getting down to the wire, um why don't you touch base with us, and we'll put it on our agenda for the following meeting in two weeks. Um that being said, um I've looked at everything that we have going on in our towns, and I've called the town departments, our emergency management person. All of our departments seem to be working very good with the doors locked here. Um everything we implemented two weeks ago seems to be going through knock-on wood flawless. Haven't had any real issues, and I'd like to check with the board right now about extending that to the end of this current month, just as the president has done and the governor has done, uh to keep these things in place over this month here and keep it all in process, cause it seems to be working very well.
I have no problem.
Yeah, I actually think they'd push it into the first week of May.
Yeah. In fact, there was a change that.
I had heard some April thirtieth, but I heard first week of May.
Well, some of them picked May fourth, and, and they're talking again about maybe extending it another week, so you know, you can go to May fourth if you want.
Yeah, I thought, why don't we go to our meeting?
That's what the state has it at right now.
So our meeting is the second now, we meet again the sixteenth. April thirtieth would be a Thursday night meeting, Bob.
Yeah.
So why don't we at least go to April thirtieth, so that way we can discuss it on our meeting?
I wasn't done.
Oh.
Did you get taken away from you?
I was just trying to do this while it was in my head here.
Taken away from you, so.
I'll bring it back to you, Leo.
So I guess back to what we were talking about, cleaning the roads. So when you spoke of it last uh meeting, there were some roads that were uh.
State roads.
Exactly, right. So state roads, but I think uh Mansion and Stark Lane were exempted from that.
Um we had taken those out only because they were state roads, I think. Mansion roads, a state road going down.
Well, the maintained, the road is maintained by the state, but imagine those people live on the road, and it is a town road too.
Well, what I thought we'd do is.
Cause I drove down there the other day coming back, and that Stark Lane is a mess. There's all kinds of trash all on Stark Lane.
Right.
And I was like, Jesus, these people live here too, they're paying taxes.
No, I think that uh.
I understand thirteen and seventy-seven, you know, that's too busy, and we have volunteers that do that, those actually, so that's not too bad.
And I think Mansion Road as well as, what's yours, Everett?
Everett Road, yeah.
Everett Dam Road. I think when you get done with all the rest, we should add those to your list before we do anything else. I don't think traffic's any different on those roads than it is on the other ones.
Right, yeah, I agree. Uh you know, I, I think if you leave it towards the end so that we have something for them to go on to, at least they're on the town roads. Yeah. And then when they get to the state roads, which is Mansion, you know, Winslow and Stark and Everett Dam, I don't think there's a problem with them cleaning that when the other roads have been cleaned. Yeah, but it is a town road. I mean, the town, the state maintains it for the town. But I mean, you know, basically, it's the people living on those little roads are like you said, uh it's not that much more traffic. There's still quiet little roads, you know?
And just uh while we're on that same trash thing, Woody showed me there were two other townspeople with this additional time they have have picked up their own roads and brought in additional seven or eight bags of trash on their own. That's really good. A good time to pick our town.
I was gonna do that, and then I saw them walk up my road. It's like, geez, okay.
Yep, yours was one, and he said, more pond brought some more stuff, so.
Nice. So, so that was really good. Anyways, I wanted to let the, the board know and everyone know that they're doing a real good job, I thought. You know, if they find trash at Kimball's Pond in somebody's address in there, have them bring it over and dump it on the guy's lawn.
No, we can't do that.
I know.
They have gone through that trash before, and the police department has gotten involved, and they've, you know, had them be responsible for it. I don't think we've ever found anybody, but.
No, I'm just, I was just kidding when I said that, but you know, imagine somebody gets up and they find all this stuff they dumped out back on their lawn.
Well, Kimball Pond was a, was a real problematic area at one point.
Um anything else, Leo?
No, that's all, thank you.
Okay, go to Woody.
So I have a list. So a couple things, one, to go on to continue with their roadside cleanup. Uh they've done Old Hockington Road. I did a drive-through on um North Woods Road. I saw one bag can on someone's lawn. I don't, we're not gonna go pick that up. So some of the roads, they did do a drive-down, you know, they went through it and it wasn't a ton of stoplight. If there was, they stopped and picked it up, but they've done, so far they've done Old Hockington, North Woods, um Clifford Farm, did a drive-up around that. Um there was nothing there, nothing that we could see anyways. Um I won't say that, you know, on any summer to leaves there isn't something. You're gonna find out on all the roads. They've done Ray Road, they've done the dirt section of Winslow Road, they've done the dirt section of Mansion Road. Oh, they did um Caleb's Way, the uh Devil Steps, Pines, uh, what do they call that road?
Dirt section of Mansion Road?
Yeah.
A way down at the end?
Yeah.
Yeah, down over the hill. They done the road, Farrington Corner, down to the Sportsman Club, back out. They've gone up Tiny Hill Road, they done Guinea Road. Um I kinda bounced them. There, there hasn't been a lot of lot on those roads, and some of them, I think they did old fort. Those are uh, you know, a lot of the developments, either the people are taking it themselves, or it's just not a lot, cause it's really not a throughway.
Right.
So we've bounced down to some other sections of town. We started on Blackbrook the other day. Uh Blackbrook's almost done. They've done Long Pond, Little Lane, and they started down into the Kimball Pond. They've got a little section left down in there to do. Not undersure, not sure why they bounced all the way down Kimball Pond and then finished Blackbrook, but regardless, those will get finished up next week, and then we're gonna work our way over east and then come back this way. And then, you know, I said, we haven't, we haven't gone to everybody's road yet, but we're gonna get to you.
Well, don't, don't rush in love.
No, no, no.
It's several weeks to do this.
Oh, yeah, no, they're gonna, you know, they're going, they're working, they're allotted time, and if I can spare three guys out there, I send three guys out. Um, you know, Jeff Ben, good, he gave us a set of signs to use.
Yeah.
Um I'll probably pick up some smaller ones, cause eventually they're gonna start their road projects, and they'll leave those back. These are, I can get some smaller ones, pretty reasonable, just mount on a great stake, stick them in a cone. Um they say litter crew ahead, um kinda thing.
Those guys are gonna be in shape when they're done.
Yeah, there you go. So the other issues.
Yeah. Well, that wasn't an issue, that was just.
No, that's not an issue, I just gave you kinda, so some of the issues we're having, um obviously trash is unbelievable right now. We're switching the box, uh demo, this free demo thing is really killing me. I mean, two weeks and I'm already just under seven hundred dollars in the red, excuse me, on the demo, for what we haven't taken in for fees. So I'm assuming from what I just heard you guys wanna run things where we've been running them. Just uh, you know, I went on the CDC's website, looked around in there, a lot of their stuff that refers you to um either the National Waste and Recycling Association, or or the Solid Waste Administration of North America OSHA sites. Um going to DES's site, they refer to these other two sites as well. Pretty much what they're telling is, and they're not saying a whole lot about how long it stays on the material or anything like that. Pretty much just says PPEs and, you know, gloves and eye protection and puncture-resistant gloves. So I think we need to come up with a plan. I know we talked two weeks ago. We're gonna decide again in two weeks what we're gonna do, if we're gonna stay going down this road. People are asking us, you know, how long this, we're holding our stuff as long as we can, we wanna, they don't wanna throw it out, I mean, and I don't blame them. So it's up to you how you want it. I mean, there are some ways we can do it where we're not touching the material.
What are you talking about? Be specific, you talking about recycling?
Yeah, recycling.
Cause I saw people bringing glass in, and you were allowing them to throw that.
Yeah, if they wanna, and what I've done, if they wanna throw this steel.
Yeah.
In, throw it in, that's fine. Um we could go one step more, and I have some dumpsters that I can set in front of the recycling center. They could load them themselves, and we can hang signs on them, they can load them themselves. Um you know, maybe one person monitoring that area, limit to, you know, four cars in front of the building at a time, so you don't, and just let them go. So you don't, and just let them go. The issue would be, you know, cardboard, they could throw it in the door, the doorway, you know, we could move it afterwards.
I guess it stays on cardboard quite a while, Woody.
See, I haven't seen any documentation on it. That's what I've been trying to find on the plastics.
Well, I know they had it on like 2020 the other night. Everything is set up, 24, 36, 48 hours, so it all varies.
What's the most problematic item that you think?
We're throwing a ton of cardboard away, lots of cardboard. In the market, I hate to say this, I'm, you know, I'm on a double edged sword.
Right.
And I got to look out for the town's best interest. I also got to look out for my employees' best interest as well. So I'm on a double edged sword.
No, you have to watch out for your employees. We have to watch out for them.
Right, but I mean, you know, down there, it's, you know, they're my responsibility. Something happens, my responsibility. You know, I answer you guys. There's a problem, you know. So what I'm dealing with is people want to know what they can do with their stuff. Right now it's in the trash. They're trying to hold it. A lot of people don't have the storage. Our trash number's going up. That's, that's evident that that's going to happen. So I didn't know if we could come up with a way to kind of solve these issues a little bit.
Well, I, I do want you to keep track of what you think is going up because like construction debris.
Yeah.
You know, you're filling a dumpster up there, but not all of that would be chargeable items anyway because it's brought in in small amounts. It's going to be put in there.
Right, most of what we're seeing is, there's been a couple little, a lot of it pickup loads, trailer loads kind of thing.
We got to remember it's springtime, so people are doing cleanup there at home.
I get that.
So we're going to see it.
Well, they don't have anything else to do either but work.
Right.
Right, and we're, you're not going to see that so much on my side because I do have a line item that covers demo. Once you get to a certain tonnage, it's going to be an issue. Where you're going to see it's on your, your income side where you're not going to see. Like I might say have an outgo of $10,000 a demo where you might normally see, because we do allow people to dump for free. Say you might normally see a $7,000 income from it. You're not, as of right now, you're not going to see that because that number's going away. You'll still see my outgo, but you won't see your income from it.
You know, we're still hoping this is going to be a short period of time and at least for the next two weeks. I'd like to continue down this path to our next meeting and then maybe look at it one more time then. At that point, your road cleanup's probably going to be most likely wrapped up.
Well, it's going to be, it'll be tight because it's, they're getting on some roads now, they're going to have some distance to them.
Okay.
That you're not going to be able to do in a day, that sort of thing. The other question comes in, you know, we got people that want to bring, I mean, freon units, they want to bring their tires. That's all stuff that we build for. They want to bring their mattresses, they want to bring their electronics. So we still want to hold that. I know this one, I'm asking.
And we're not, we're not unique. This is happening in a lot of towns. So I think that, I think.
And a lot of towns are still running normal business, so that's kind of where we're.
Right.
Is, I, I just want direction from the board so when I go, because I, I need to put something out for the public, you know.
I'm thinking, let's go two more weeks and we'll look at it at our next meeting.
Okay.
And we're prepared to do what we need to on our town's end as far as if you track it. We're going to try and go to the state or go to the federal government and try and get recovery on those items. If we can't, we're prepared, I think, as a town to take care of those portions of the billing that I don't think are going to be astronomical for what we're, we're doing over this next period of time.
So we're going to run, so I'm clear, so I can.
Just as you have been.
We're going to run like we have been for additional two weeks. We'll discuss it again in two weeks at the next selectmen meeting and.
And some of my thoughts are in two weeks, we may take some of those items, let them offload them themselves. And we may let them sit there on the right side after your building for a period of two weeks, like say refrigerators or freezers or whatever else. And let them sit there for a period of two weeks and just let that timeframe go by.
Okay.
Where they could be contaminated and still use your gloves and whatnot.
Right.
I just don't want to start piling it up right now because.
Right, well then it becomes the other issue of a hand to handle with the money.
Right. So if we can go two more weeks as you are.
Okay.
Maybe we can see the numbers and the hamsters start heading the other way and we'll make a decision.
Okay, so I did see something nice there when you had the glass option available. Someone that kind of dumped my glass there and your attendant said, "Yes, just take it, glass, glass only and dump it in there."
I saw the same.
That was a good thing.
Which we gave him that ability to use those dumpsters.
So, so that you're aware, I mean, I'll put something out on, like we did last time on the Thump Out and Community page. And if you're okay with it, I'm going to spell it out just like we did. But give them the option that if they want to dump their glass in the glass, that's fine. And for now, if they want to dump their steel cans in their aluminum in that dumpster.
Yep.
That's fine as well. Okay.
But the thing is, a lot of people used to, what they used to do is mainstream it. Put everything in one bag and you don't want that. Then you get contamination and screws everything up.
Right. That's why, you know, that's why I mentioned before the dumpsters, if they offloaded it in there and then it sets, you know, that kind of thing. But we'll run with this plan for another two weeks and I'll come back in and we'll.
Yeah, formulate, formulate some type of a plan with, like you're talking about with the dumpsters. You know, and, and.
Two weeks, two weeks, bring us what you'd like to maybe start doing as you see this going.
Same thing and, you know, unfortunately, and you made, you made a good point. People are home right now, so, I mean, I'm doing the same thing, doing stuff at home. And of course I'm holding off on getting rid of stuff till, you know, till you guys are ready to operate again.
Right.
I mean, I'm storing cardboard and everything only because I knew cardboard was up because somebody at the transfer station, one of you guys, Stanley, said, you know, cardboard seems like it's too bad to be wasting it. So, you know, you're hanging on to stuffs. But especially demo debris, you know, when you're getting a full pickup load or a trailer that's bringing it in. Especially if it's a trailer, usually somebody's doing work somewhere.
Yeah.
And it's a good time for them to get rid of it when it's free.
Yeah.
Can, can, I, I know it's because they don't want to handle the money, right?
Yeah.
Can they, you know, wear rubber gloves and?
So hard to handle money with rubber gloves, it really.
I think the other thing was they want to keep that face-to-face contact away.
Yeah.
Well, like I said, I just want, I just gave you that number so you know where we stand at, you know, two weeks. This is, and it could drop off next week where demo's next to nothing, but it could increase again.
We call it a demo holiday?
There you go.
And to follow up on what Bob said, I think that, you know, if you could send us an email of what you're thinking your options might be before our next meeting, we can review them a little bit. And keep us in the loop like that with email, let us know how things are going.
And the other thing that we're seeing, and it's not a big deal, is you can tell people definitely home brush has been unbelievable.
I couldn't believe how quick that filled up.
It's been in three quarters filled and it's only been open for a couple of days. It's just crazy.
I'm fired pretty soon.
I figure probably Tuesday. It'll be full this weekend.
Just don't melt the panels, okay?
Well, I mean, it's pretty, I just, like I said, it's one to get a feel so we're all kind of on the same page and.
Nope. By the way, I, I still say, I want to say publicly, kudos to your operation, the way you have it configured down there, very smooth. I, I thought your, your attendants were well-trained. They was keeping their distance. Some, I saw one, one resident said, "I have glass here." He directed her right over to the glass, dump your glass right there and there was no holdup and there was, everyone kept their distance. And just the way you have traffic configured, spot on.
It's been working good. The residents have been real cooperative. You know, I think everybody's in the same boat. Nobody wants this. So everybody's, you know, moving along, they're keeping. The only one thing we ever did, you know, one person I had to speak to and he wasn't even from town as far as I know was a car came in, pulled over, parked down by, as you're leaving, just beyond the telephone pole and that guy doing, he walked up and he said, uh, off, off from the other side of the street, next to the car, said, "You all set?" "I'm just doing my work," I said. "They can't have anybody sitting here, you have to move." So I'm there, "Okay, no problem," he drove off. Okay, just kind of some weird things, you know?
Yeah. But overall, I thought your operation's very smooth.
They're trying, they're trying to keep people.
And your employees are spot on.
They're trying to keep things going.
Before I forget, you talked about making some signs for when you guys are working on the road.
Yeah, these are actually ones that you buy. They're like, I think they're $20 a piece.
If they could be made quickly, maybe we could do a couple of signs that are a little bit larger than the piece of paper that you have there.
Okay.
Because like I was waiting in line, I couldn't read that until I got my door right up by it.
Okay.
So if you, if you get a chance, I know it'll be a little bit of expense to you, but. But maybe we could put a little makeup, a couple of bigger signs and we will not be handling your trash.
Okay.
Same things you have on there already.
Yeah, we could do something on that.
Yeah, I agree with the signs.
Check the glass container for some glasses.
Anything else, Woody? I got to watch it now. I'm in the hot seat.
Oh, I love it. I love it.
All right, I'm going to bring it back to the board. Leanne's on vacation this week, but I did talk with her about giving us our agenda next week or in two weeks from now and not coming to the meeting so we can spread out properly.
Yeah.
I think that she does her agenda ahead of time, that she gives us a list of items. I like this, being able to spread away and Jennifer's going to continue doing like she has. So bringing it back to the board, Bob, would you like to start?
Well, I only have one thing. I had John Stevens talk to me yesterday about our home day.
Yeah.
They're looking at the 15th of August and he didn't know if we were changing the way we were operating now or whatever. And I said, "Right now we're operating the way we've been directed to really operate and, you know, according to what the state would like to see." That he has time, you know, I said, "But when you get into June, unless you have some lead time with your vendors." Because that's why Art's on the common, if you remember, they got canceled is they had to notify their vendors, you know? So I said, "If you find that in June that you're, if things are still going this way, you may want to check with your vendors and see what you're going to do." Because he talked about maybe moving it to the middle of September. Well, I, you know, August 15th and September, pretty close together, the second week of September. So, and you're telling these people, "We're not having it the 15th, but we'll do it in September." Most of them got a gig going in September.
Yeah, like, and I might have to give ice cream out somewhere else.
You know, you get the, the state fairs and you got all kinds of things going on in, in the fall, so I mean.
Yeah, the fair season's definitely going to be full swing.
So right now it's up in the air and they're going to plan for it, but they're not sure if it's going to happen.
You know, if we miss the year, so be it. Again, makes the, next year will be even better.
Well, it would be nice if this was over to give the townspeople something to look forward to too. What do you have, Mike?
I, the only thing I had was the EOC and I'll get the chief to work on that. That's the only thing I had. I just looked at the calendar. It appears that all those subcommittees throughout the entire town, August, April's going to be a quiet month in town. If you look at calendar, everything's been canceled except our meeting, it's like.
Yeah, and we're not, we're not changing our meetings only because we're meeting every other week and.
You don't have a big turnout.
We don't have a big turnout, no, and nothing that isn't really demanding will be on the agenda. Also, is that it, Mike?
That's all I had. Thank you.
I want to bring out one other thing. John Wiggins said that they did get a response back from the state for their personal protection equipment, the PPE. And the state did get them their personal protection equipment. So they are well established with what they think they need. John had requested it and the state had provided it. So I think our state's doing a good job of getting that stuff out in advance of when we need it. And I just want to reiterate, April 30th, 2020, we'll extend the town's COVID-19 guidelines for our town departments.
We'll, we're going to extend it to the 30th and then review it on the 30th.
That's right.
Okay.
And Woody, we're going to review yours halfway in between, which will be the.
16th?
16th. All right, so.
I think some of your ideas are good to come forward though.
April 16th, because yours is the department that probably sees the most amount of traffic from our town. So we'll look at that and if it's something that we think that we can either start transferring money or doing something.
Like I said, you know, as far as money, I mean, how, where we're going to see the biggest issues is towards the end of the year. You know, because I have money budgeted and there is, I always figure a little extra for extra tonnage for trash, extra tonnage for demos. So we, in theory, could be all right, but I don't want to spring it on you at the end and go, "Hey, guess what, it costs us this much."
The PRA has us hold that 5% daily day fund. This is exactly the reason they have us do this for these types of situations the town come upon.
Right.
That nobody could have planned it or pre, pre-prepared for it. So that's what we have that amount of money for. We just got a memo today stating that we're allowed to use this on emergency services for our town. So. The governor just made that approval today. We don't have to go any further. The board can make that decision, so it's nothing we have to go to town meeting for. So we've got some latitude now from the state and we'll work on that.
I agree, we, we go with a very conservative approach because, you know, you don't have much depth in your department. Your guys start becoming ill because they get exposed to people. It's not, it's not going to be a good scenario.
No, 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 Mike, no. We had this talk the other day that, for instance, if I should get it, we're in, we don't have a driver.
Right.
You know, unless we can, you know, highway's going to be coming into a busy season, so that, there's a big issue right there.
Well, not just that, you've got, you know, your wife's at home.
Oh, yeah.
You've got to think about all kinds of different things at that.
Yeah, I mean, we all have, we're all in the same boat with this, so. I think as long as we work together and everybody keeps doing what they do, we'll come out ahead.
Having the ability to keep track of, you know, the extra tonnage.
Right.
Because we can't recycle.
Right.
And the debris, you know, the demolition that is adding that we can't collect on because of the concern with, you know, the COVID-19. At least keeping track of those numbers, we'll see if we may get some reimbursement.
Right.
Because they promised that they would take care of things that were impacted because of, you know, the virus, so.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motions are made, second. Meeting's adjourned.